It is seven P M. We will call to order the Tuesday, October fourth city council meeting. We'll start with roll call.
Councilman Becker.
Here.
Councilman Hartwick.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Schultz.
Here.
President Shear.
Here. Agenda item three is public hearings. This evening we have none. Agenda item four is public comment. Just as a reminder, the city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. That would be your name, address, subject matter and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. We have nobody signed up in person, so this will be a first call for public comment, either virtually or in person. There's a second call for public comment. This is a third and final call for public comment. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move right along. Agenda item number five is our consent agenda. The consent agenda that is outlined below is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed items five A through five C.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item six is petitions, requests and communications. Six A is the review and possible action relating to a proclamation. Recognizing fire prevention week in the city of Fort Atkinson. I have the proclamation. There we go. So the proclamation for the twenty twenty two fire prevention week is whereas the city of Fort Atkinson is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires caused two thousand five hundred eighty civilian deaths in the United States in twenty twenty, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred fifty six thousand five hundred home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sent smoke well before you can alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas city residents should be sure everyone in their home understands the sounds of smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas city residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas city residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas city first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas city residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the twenty twenty two fire prevention week theme, fire won't wait, plan your escape, effectively serves to remind residents it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now, therefore, I, Christopher Shear, city council president of the city of Fort Atkinson, do hereby proclaim October ninth through fifteenth twenty twenty two as fire prevention week throughout the city of Fort Atkinson. And I urge all the people of the city to plan and practice a home fire escape for fire prevention week twenty twenty two and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the city's fire and emergency services. I'm going to present this proclamation to our fire staff that is here.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do for us.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, guys.
I'll move to adopt the proclamation recognizing fire prevention week in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. And motion carries. Agenda item seven is resolutions and ordinances. Seven A is the review and possible action relating to a resolution authorizing entry into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement relating to the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative and authorizing participation in the investment programs to the fund.
Thank you. The city has an investment policy included in the approved financial stability guidebook. The policy outlines the goals, parameters and other matters. When the city considers investment opportunities. The city has funds invested with local banks and the state's local government investment pool or LGIP. The city also has money market accounts that service savings accounts. As the city's investments in the LGIP continues to grow, we have considered additional opportunities to yield higher interest rates while remaining in line with the city's investment policies and best practices. PMA is a national firm that provides customized integrated financial solutions to the public sector and related entities. PMA serves over four thousand municipalities, school districts and local government investment pools and other institutions across fourteen states. As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, PMA had over thirty two point five billion dollars in assets under administration. And tonight we have Matt Silky with PMA present to tell the council about his company, the services they provide and the proposal for investment in WISK. So Matt, give me just a second here and I'll pull up your.
Really appreciate you covering my first slide for me. I only threw a few on here. So, as she stated, yeah, PMA is a national company. I work only in the state of Wisconsin. We have an office out of Milwaukee. There, there we have eight individuals that service public entities from across the state, of which we are really touching on two hundred and ninety. So that is made up predominantly of school districts, but municipalities, counties, tech colleges make up the other portion of the participant list. So thirty two and a half billion dollars in assets as of six thirty twenty two. We are a growing company. We have been around since the eighties. The company itself was founded on a bank credit analysis that was a replicable analysis that the founder who was a business, a school business official in the state of Illinois, he put it together after the SNL crisis in the eighties and decided to package it to his friends that were also part of local government entities. Later on, he was asked by all of those individuals to begin working with his relationships with all of these national, regional and local banks to begin brokerage investments. And so that is sort of how the investment arm of PMA was born. That is the arm that I work off of. We have several different angles and corners of the company. And again, I work on just the investment services side. So next slide, please. So these are all of our service offerings. I work on the broker dealer side as well as the LGIP side. Part of my job is to offer a number of these other different service offerings, including cash flow analysis and bond proceeds management. So the other parts of our company highlighted here are financial advisory, investment advisory and bank credit analysis, which is still a very large part of the company today as we do work with, I believe, sixteen hundred banks across the country, each of which has to pass our stringent credit risk analysis to essentially join our network of institutions where we recommend people hold their funds. So if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So obviously, being a public entity, you guys are limited in how you can invest most of your dollars. Wisconsin State Statute sixty six oh six oh three really defines it as more or less fixed income or cash equivalent investments. So you have bank deposits. So obviously you work with many local banks. We do work with a number of local banks. I believe the number of local banks that we work with in the state that have frickin' more locations in Wisconsin is around eighty. Otherwise, we do work with over fifty securities dealers offering treasuries, government agencies, things like that. And then obviously there are investments that we work with that are technically allowed by state statute on an individual basis, but given the fact that they're further down the spectrum of risk on a more individual basis, we choose not to offer them on that individual basis and rather utilize them in our local government investment pools where the risk can be a little bit more diversified out and shared by all the public entities. So very vanilla, but nonetheless, all the services that we offer are very customized for public entities. They are the only entities that we work with. So I did put a couple of slides on here just to kind of show a little bit of a market outlook in terms of where things are going. Obviously, the Fed met a couple of weeks back and bumped interest rates, short term interest rates, some of their seventy five basis points. We don't really necessarily see that as slowing down, kind of heading into quarter one and quarter two of twenty twenty three. And where that really leaves us is an inverted yield curve, which essentially is predicting the recession, one that we technically already entered. But you can see that short term interest rates have surpassed and will for some time continue to surpass some of those longer term interest rates that are out there. Once you get past probably about the two year mark, you, you sort of tend to lose enough where it might not make sense to invest that far out, but obviously each different entity is different. You know, we always recommend people invest to their liabilities. That's typically the most optimal way to invest dollars. So and then the last slide I put together here is just sort of an outlook for the next couple of years. Basically, what this is, is every member of the federal open market committee that essentially votes on how they move short term interest rates in, in this case to attempt to control inflation. This is where they see interest rates being for the next couple of years. You can see that they drop precipitously after twenty twenty three where basically they're, they feel as though the interest rates that they've been working on for nine months, which are now really beginning to enter the the economy after that period will have done their job and pretty much stemmed inflation to a point where they would want it to be. So yeah, that's, that's really what I prepared. I wanted to overview what PMA for you guys. WISK is the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative. It is a separate entity entirely. They hire us to market and administer the fund. And we've been doing that since, I believe, the early nineties. So any questions at all?
Can you talk a little bit about the actual proposal for that we are, that we're proposing the four million dollars of funds into WISK?
Sure.
And the anticipated investment income over that two year term?
Sure. So we have had discussions about this. We, we decided that it would be in the best interest of the city to invest four million dollars. And how we decided to go about that was by building out a laddered investment, which basically means that you, you will begin with a mixture of short term and longer term investments going six, twelve, eighteen, twenty four months. And then essentially what happens is as those investments mature, you're able to reinvest at the prevailing market yields and it it is a very optimal way to invest over time because you're taking advantage of rising interest rates, but also in lower, I'm sorry, declining interest rate environments, you're able to invest out past that yield curve. And so I, I don't, I did not have, I don't not have the numbers in front of me. I believe it was around two hundred thousand dollars for the first set of ladder investments, which would last six, twelve, eighteen and twenty four months. I believe that's what the, around where the interest income would be.
Yeah, that, that proposal is, is in the packet. So the council does have that and, and just to provide some context so that we would be, we're recommending moving four million dollars of the funds in the city's LGIP account, which currently has about ten point two million dollars in it. Moving four million dollars from the LGIP to WISK with a estimated, well, I can tell you right now that at the August twenty twenty two interest rate for the LGIP was two point one five percent, which would yield about eighty six thousand dollars in interest on the ten point two or on the, excuse me, on the four million dollar investment. However, if we do move the four million dollars, we still have six point two million dollars in the LGIP. We're diversifying our investments a little bit and then the anticipated investment income after that two year term would be two hundred and five thousand dollars. So it is more than twice as much as, as the, as the LGIP. So staff does recommend that the council adopt the resolution authorizing entry into the Wisconsin into the intergovernmental cooperation agreement relating to the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative and authorizing participation in the investment programs of the fund. We further recommend that the city council authorize the city manager to invest four million dollars of funds currently held within the LGIP with PMA securities in WISK in accordance with the proposal that's included in your packet. And I will note that this is in line with the city's investment policy. Which is also included in your packet.
How did your team settle on the four million?
I think that was a, a number that they felt comfortable with, at least beginning.
Michelle and I, Michelle and I looked at the, our investments, the range and breadth and decided that four million dollars would be a good start.
One of the nice things about a ladder is that it'll, it provides liquidity over time. Obviously, every six months you have those maturities rolling off, at least, at least in this ladder. And you can pull those funds back and use them however you please, including the interest, but obviously with the ability to reinvest and add more over time, if you'd like, you certainly can do so.
I'm going to show a little ignorance here too, and obviously you can't be a, a fortune teller in your job, but what is, what is the potential difference in loss of moving to a structure like this versus where those funds have been?
What do you mean by loss?
I mean, in terms, I guess, is, is there potential to actually lose money in this or is it just a matter of how much you would make?
So with any investment, there's always risk. The recommendation was built primarily, actually no, only with US government securities. So in the world of investments, I, I believe those, so US government securities, treasuries, agencies, they're widely regarded as the gold standard of fixed income. They're basically what collateral is built out of for collateralized investments. So those are securities that are being put forward by institutions to essentially ensure or protect somebody else's deposit. So that, that loss is very much limited compared to, you know, the wide array of investments that are around. They are withheld to market values over time, but we never really recommend purchasing investments when people could potentially have to sell them at any point in time. We recommend them as buy and hold investments, meaning that if you purchase it, you're going to receive the greed upon yield. Now, obviously, that is all, the idea of selling those on the open market is also a positive in some respect is that they are considered a liquid fixed rate investment. But obviously the prevailing market rates are going to dictate what you get at any point in time. So
Thank you.
Matt, you mentioned that PMA works with quite a few communities in Wisconsin. Are, are, have other communities been shifting to a mechanism like this or are we on the forefront? Can you tell us where we are on that?
So we have two hundred and ninety entities that we work with around that. I would say that probably about forty, forty five to fifty of them are municipalities. I think we've added, I believe, at least a dozen participants over the last year. Part of that is a reflection of where interest rates are going and that treasuries and agencies that we are talking about providing to you have really been driving the market in terms of yield. It's, it's a great competitor to the state LGIP in that we offer a vast array of services and we are proactively reaching out to these entities offering them, you know, hey, they're, this, this bank is in the market with X rate for ninety days.
Sure.
Do you have any opportunity at ninety days to take advantage of it? And a lot of people really, really value that type of proactive approach. And so, yeah, there's, there's definitely a drive away from sort of the unmanaged pool towards, you know, a, a team aspect and a team approach of managing finances and investments.
Okay. Well, it's, it's good to know that the trend seems to be heading in that direction.
Yeah, I would definitely say we are not on the forefront of, of investment policy here. But I, I think it's a good thing for the city to have, to diversify our investments a little bit. And prior to this two point one five interest rate for the LGIP, it was under one.
Yeah.
So, so I, I mean, where our, that August interest rate is, is higher than it has been for a few years. And, and so that the LGI, one of the positives about the LGIP is that those investments remain liquid. We can access them whenever we like to. And this is a similar strategy because it is only a two year. It is only for two years. So they are still liquid. We can still access them. We still do have enough funds in LGIP and some of our other accounts to access if, if there's something catastrophic happened that we would need access to large amounts of, of money immediately.
And is there any penalty or loss from LGIP to move these funds? No?
They are the city's funds.
Thank you. I'm quite the finance nerd. If I was bound by the city's investment restrictions, like this would be a decision I would make. I, I will move to adopt the resolution authorizing entry into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement relating to the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative and authorizing participation in the investment programs of the fun fund and to authorize the city manager to invest four thousand, four million dollars of funds with PMA in WISK.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. That motion carries. And if you can get us even better return, we'll be pretty much happier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Agenda item eight is reports of officers, boards and committees. Eight A is the city managers report.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank the folks from the fire department who were, were able to attend tonight to receive that proclamation. We appreciate their dedication to training and their dedication to the community through that, through their volunteer department at this time. I will also give you an update on the EMS flex grant that the city received through the state. That total was actually one hundred and thirty five thousand, seven hundred and thirty five dollars, which will be used towards the startup costs for the new EMS service that's starting on January first. This will reduce the amount of the federal ARPA funds needed for the project. So I want to thank Chief Roush and his team for working on that grant. I was fortunate to attend a League of Wisconsin Municipalities event in Dodgeville last week and council member Becker attended a similar event in Mount Pleasant last week. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities lobby is on behalf of the interests of cities and villages in Wisconsin. And this year, the league's priority is to enlighten our legislators relating to our struggles with funding local government services. It continues to be challenging due to limited revenue, revenue streams and the increasing cost of people and providing services. The city will hold a budget workshop on October eleventh, starting at five thirty P M in this room and via Zoom. The budget will be introduced at the meeting and our department directors will present their budget numbers to the city council. There will be no action at this meeting. It is, it is an introduction. Last week, the joint review board and the plan commission met to and reviewed the two new proposed tax increment districts. The plan commission did formally recommend that the city council approve the two TIDS. They will be on the council agenda on October eighteenth for council, additional council review. If you recall, there was a workshop on September sixth that provided a lot of information about those as well. The joint review board will meet again and review them on November first. TDS will be beginning a fiber installation project within the city within the next two weeks. The majority of the work will happen within the public rights of way. TDS has a solid communication strategy and the city will assist in sharing items through social media so that the public can stay informed of the work as it happens. Obviously, any individuals who will be impacted by the work will be notified several times by TDS before any work occurs. And the folks from TDS do plan to make a presentation to the city council on October eighteenth relating to this project. I also want to just congratulate the Ford X and Chamber of Commerce on a successful open house and, and event today. I was not able to attend, but I know several people here did. So just want to congratulate them. And that's all I have.
Thank you much. Agenda item nine is unfinished business. This evening we have none. Agenda item ten is new business. Ten A is the review and possible action relating to an extraterritorial certified survey map for the Gore Melage property located at nineteen seventeen South Main Street.
Yeah, thank you. This property is, has it come before us in the past under different ownership? The, the Merriman family owned this property. I think all of you had maps and such in your, in your packets, so kind of have an understanding of where the property is at. The, the CSM from the current owners, Beth Gore and John Malag came before the planning commission in, I believe in July perhaps. And the planning commission did approve it with, with two stipulations. That was that the the city's official mapped right of ways, if you recall, in early twenty twenty two, we adopted an official map showing where road corridors may extend beyond the city's boundaries. This parcel does include officially mapped roads. So we asked that the applicants add those officially mapped road right of ways to not only the CSM that was up for review, but also the parent parcel, which was kind of what was left over after the two acre parcel was broken off. The, the applicant, I, I think, was somewhat struck by that requirement, but obliged on the CSM and was not, did not feel that we had the right to request it on the parent parcel. So in discussions with, with the applicant, we agreed that we would seek some legal counsel on this and figure out what our really what our, our pathway was or our ability to include that legally within the decision. Attorney Westrick looked into this matter. We reached out to the league and we reached out to a third attorney as well about this. In short, it appears that the legal statutes are really not clear as to what the city's ability is to, to request this in the interest of not dragging the applicants into a situation where they would have to defend themselves legally. We felt that it was good enough that we have these right of way shown on the CSM and the parent parcel, although it would be great to have that just simply as a communication tool for the future, that the potential investment of time, effort and most of all money, I think, and seeking some sort of legal opinion on that may be a bit more than what we need at this point. So with that, we came back to city council for your review of the extraterritorial. And the only difference here is, is that we're asking you to change that condition in your approval of this extraterritorial CSM. So this was a good exercise, I think, on the city's side of things. Certainly some frustrations with the applicant, but I think at the same time they came forward and were very much open to conversations with city staff on how to proceed with this. City staff certainly understand why they want to break the parcel up. And I think they understand why we're trying to affect in this particular area, the investment in infrastructure that was placed probably in the eighties in this particular area with the expectation of residential development and the continuation of roads. So that certainly isn't stopped with this approval. It does get more challenging because there are more owners now of that person, but, but I think we've, we've done as, as much as we can legally to try to preserve that long term planning. That's been a kind of a city goal for some time here. I'd be happy to take any questions on this somewhat complicated issue, but I think it's, it's fairly well laid out.
Andy, I'm just curious if the current owners would at any point sell just that parent parcel then? Does that create any issues from the city's perspective if now it's a new owner and that requirement is no longer there or would that change whether or not that was a requirement?
Yeah, the, so the, the city wouldn't know if they sold it. We're not notified of any exchange of property except through that CSM process where they break off a new section of, of a parcel. But I think the, the critical part that we need to keep in mind is this is really an effort at communication. So we're trying very hard to get out ahead of situations where these exchanges of lands occur. And then somebody comes in, has a plan to build and comes in with building permits for something. And then we're like, oh, wait a minute. And then we're like, oh, wait a minute, uh we have a road that's planned to go through here. And that's way past the point at which we want to be engaged. So the more parties we have owning these parcels that are not uh the um the those that we're communicating with, the harder it is to do that. So yes, it does complicate things a bit. Should uh Ms. Gore and Mr. Malag sell that uh parent parcel? Then we'd have a third owner in that area. Um so uh thereby making it uh slightly more challenging for that communication. But uh yeah, I think I've answered your question around about later.
And certainly appears that this would maintain good communication between the city and the current owners.
I think so, yeah. And certainly well within their rights to do this, right? I mean, this this is private property rights to be able to manage the property as you see fit. Um so I I think it was that was communicated as well. And I I think um you know what we're doing here is is keeping that right intact for these folks, so.
Hi, unless anybody's gonna jump in, um I moved to approve the one lot extraterritorial certified survey map revised August eighth, twenty twenty two for the property located at nineteen seventeen South Main Street as submitted without the officially mapped right of way shown on the parent parcel.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion questions? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Hi.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh ten B is the review impossible action relating to a ground lease between the city of Fort Atkinson and United States Cellular Operating Company LLC for use of a portion of the property at seven eleven Zafki Street.
Thank you. So US Cellular has applied for and received a conditional use permit from the city's plan commission to install a seventy foot tall monopole communication tower on the city-owned property located at seven eleven Zafki Street. This happened on March eighth, twenty twenty two. The property currently contains a fifty foot tall blue water tower and is located in the city's institutional zoning district. The proposed lease has been vetted by the by city staff and the city attorney and is attached uh to the memo and um packet tonight for possible action. US Cellular first identified the need for stronger cellular service in the area in twenty twenty. They began discussions with the city in twenty twenty one relating to the installation of an antenna on the city's water tower at this location. After investigating that option, US Cellular representatives found that the tower was not constructed to support additional antenna rings. So they proposed a monopole on the south side of the tower. City staff reviewed that with them and recommended that they move the um the tower to the north side of the water tower. Uh the monopole to the north side of the water tower, so it would be less visible to neighboring property owners. Uh the property is in the institutional zoning district. Communications towers re- require a conditional use permit. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on January twenty fifth. Several residents spoke at the public hearing in opposition to the project. The minutes from that meeting are in your packet as well. At that meeting, the Plan Commission requested additional information from US Cellular, which was provided uh including photo renderings um from different locations and a radio frequency propaganda map showing the current and future coverage areas. So that information was provided and included in the March eighth uh Plan Commission staff report, which is also included in your in your packet uh tonight. The Plan Commission did recommend or did um did approve, excuse me, the uh the conditional use permit by a vote of five to two uh subject to several conditions that uh recorded conditional use permit is included uh in your packet as well. Uh tonight, what is moving forward is um tonight, what's on the agenda is the lease agreement um between the city and US Cellular for a use of a portion of the city-owned property at this location. So there would be a um monthly payment uh in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars for the first five years of this lease that would go to the city. Would be included in the city's general fund revenue account for under commercial revenues. Uh and that is about fifteen thousand six hundred dollars in additional revenue for the city for the each of the first five years. Let's see, um Thaddeus Johnson, are you here today? That is okay. So Thaddeus is here uh representing US Cellular. Uh he can answer questions that the um city council might have relating to um how maybe how this location was chosen uh or anything of that nature or um specifics about the actual lease uh agreement. Um staff does recommend that the city council approve the proposed ground lease between the city of Fort Atkinson and US Cellular for a portion of the property located at seven eleven Zafki Street. And Thaddeus or I could could answer questions.
You mentioned the contract uh is for five years. What happens after the five year period?
Uh that's just the first five years. So it is actually a twenty five year uh lease agreement.
Okay.
And it's that that is the cost for the first five years. And then there is a ten percent escalator for each of the next five year periods.
This doesn't require like three times in front of us, just tonight, correct?
Correct. This is a lease. Uh I think you're referring to maybe ordinances that require.
I'm used to things going. It's the first reading, second reading, third reading. This doesn't have any wording like that. So I just what it what's decided tonight is the decision that goes forward.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if the if the city council wants additional information or if they if the council chooses to table this item for another meeting and request additional information, that is certainly within the council's rate.
Could you talk a little bit about, obviously, you that US Cellular is the one of the top providers or carriers certainly for our regional area? Can you speak at all to where similar monopoles like this are located in surrounding communities that they serve?
Um they do actually have another tower, I believe, on the northwest side of town. Northeast side of town. For other care or for other areas in Wisconsin, I do, I I work in Wisconsin a lot. Monopoles get placed in areas where identified by the jurisdiction is allowed meet the conditional use permits um process, that that sort of nature. Um we did just install antenna array on Milwaukee Avenue, the Blackhawk Building this uh winter to help increase coverage in this area as well. But with that, we still are in or US Cellular is still in need of additional uh coverage for this town.
And our other carriers as well? I mean, is this just a US Cellular problem? Is this a, you know, I just like why aren't AT&amp;T and Verizon and and other providers coming with similar requests?
Um I I don't necessarily work for them that often, so you know the RF engineers figure out where the need is, that sort of thing. So US Cellular hired my company GSS to find a location. If AT&amp;T or Verizon were uh, you know, needing a tower in this area, they have the right to reach out to our company or other companies. The tower that's being proposed is capable of uh supporting their antenna arrays. So if they wanted to come to town, they can go ahead and jump on this tower as well.
Uh question for the city manager. Can you uh speak to how the amount of the monthly lease was was arrived at? Is this kind of in line with where where the market's at? Do we know?
Yeah, it it was negotiated back and forth several several times. I I think we did some research. I know we did some research as to what other communities were receiving for a similar type of um lease um for a similar type of space.
Um I hear lots about five G for the future. Is this tower capable of five G or will have to be redone to to uh meet that technology?
Yep, the tower is uh designed to support any five G antenna arrays and uh equipment. So in the future, there wouldn't be a need to upgrade the tower. The tower will be built, prepped and ready for that.
Thank you.
I know you've addressed this in in other meetings and conversations, but I think just to to make sure we talk about it tonight as well. Um you know, going through the packet, I I appreciate the work US Cellular did to create the renderings and kind of show the different views from different parts of the neighborhood. Um but you know, I think understandably so. There are also a lot of folks who live in that area that don't love the idea of of something like this being so close to their home. Um you know, I think it's important to make sure people understand this is a section of the city that is owned by the city and and not zoned residentially. This this is something that is is zoned for institutional purposes only. Um but can you just talk a little bit more about exactly why this was the final location that that was settled upon for this proposal?
Yep. So when RF reaches out to 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 me for services, they essentially give me a ring. Um we started on that ring, exhausted the ring, essentially couldn't find any candidates that would fit fit their RF needs.
When you say ring, can you explain what that means?
Uh yeah, so it's the search area. So they'll give us like, say, a certain uh center point to where, you know, if this could be meet RF coverages would be the identic, you know, the uh identified candidate. So I searched that entire area to try to find a candidate that would fit those needs. Still fit, obviously, you know, uh placement of the tower that, you know, that you guys specify that would meet through a conditional use permit. Essentially, that ring got exhausted. We got moved over to the tower area where the water tank is. The only parcel that met the criteria for a tower was the city's property. Thus, still fitting RF coverage needs and also meeting the needs of the city and placing a tower.
Does the tower that you put up on the Blackhawk is the same similar technology?
Uh technology, yes. The the Blackhawk building was a was a building install. So the antennas actually mounted directly to the side of the building. Uh not the side of the building, but the penthouse uh elevator shaft. But it it would be the same antenna arrays, radios, you know, cabinetry, that that sort of nature.
Um the radius of service that this offers is uh half mile, quarter mile.
Um I can't answer in full because I'm not an RF engineer, but I would say that it would give about a half mile to possibly a mile radius. But again, I'm not RF engineer, so please don't sleep me on that.
I I'm just curious, does it probably properly butts up against each other for that from the coverage from Blackhawk to the coverage? So this would uh pretty much not have a big gap in between them?
Right. So they what the what the objective is to try to fit their their frequencies together like a like, you know, fingers. So that that antenna array on the Blackhawk building will will tie in with the the tower proposed up on the water tank to fill in all the coverage gaps as best as possible.
Thank you.
Rebecca, maybe this is more of a question for you, but was part of the discussion of not necessarily specific location, but general area of location with the knowledge and understanding that we will be developing the banker road area of town? I mean, is US Cellular understanding kind of what the growth plans of the city are and taking that into account here? Or is this gonna be a, you know, every two, three years, we're gonna be talking about needing another tower somewhere for for service purposes?
Yeah, I mean, I I can't speak to what US Cellular, I guess, knows or doesn't know. I I think if we have a mile radius of this, I think our banker road area would be well within that. Um I you know, I I I certainly can't say if there would be another proposal uh in the future for a different piece of land to meet a need that's identified in the future based on future technology or or anything else that that happens. Um I will say that these um you know, the the cell tower industry is, you know, there's regulations involved that make it so there aren't monopoles uh on every street corner. I I mean, they're required to offer their competitors with space for their competitors um antenna on these monopoles so that we don't run into a situation where there's multiple poles serving all the different types of of carriers. So I I mean, I I think that they are looking ahead uh with the service. There have been uh multiple complaints over multiple years about service in this area, including from our police department. Um I think this does serve a need. Um and uh the location, um the coverage uh I think is is meets the needs of the community. Um while also, you know, trying as as best you can height a seventy foot pole, I feel like it is relatively well hidden behind a fifty foot blue water tower.
I just want to say out of respect for everybody here, you know, I I certainly appreciate all the work staff has done on this and I appreciate the work US Cellular has done this. Your your company has done on this to to make this as um aesthetically pleasing and acceptable as possible. I just um what weighs on me is the is the simple fact I have had so many residents personally reach out to me on this with with various concerns and and you know, we had a a petition go out with many, many signatures. And so that's just weighing on me a lot. Um I I recognize that US Cellular are simply simply trying to give better service to their paying customers, but just the the uh concerns of the neighborhood weigh on me a lot on this on this issue.
I really have a question.
And I don't know that I do either. Um you know, I I guess just for folks' reference or anybody who listens in or or reads our minutes. I mean, I would say outside of our referendum and our budget, this is definitely the thing the staff has prepared the most information for us to review. Um so you know, whatever ultimately, whatever the decision is that's made, I just, I want folks to know this was this was something that was very, very heavily reviewed. It was an extensive amount of time and effort that the city put into making sure that we had everything to review that we did. Um you know, to Mason's point, I I can certainly understand that residents um feedback on this. I can't say that I wouldn't have the same type of feedback if it was my neighborhood. But again, I think that also puts us in that conversation of, you know, not in my backyard. But ultimately, if we are going to be focused on how our city has to grow and how it effectively needs to grow, everything is going to be somebody's backyard. And I think that for me is is just the hard part is I certainly don't want any residents to feel like anybody who does vote to support this is is disregarding their thoughts or or not taking that feedback into account. Um but ultimately, we also have to be weighing that against decisions of of for the city as a whole. And and that is a tough position to be in because how do we do everything that we need to do, but also keep every individual homeowner happy? And and I don't know that in every situation we we can do that. But I just think it's important for people to know the amount of time and efforts and and work that has been been put in from the city side to to have every every question answered um as as best as best as they could. So I I certainly appreciate that.
I have uh spoke with several people very close to where this is going on that I've known for dozens of years and would call friends. Um they're very adamantly opposed to this idea. And I told, what I told them was that they should research it enough and come up with something to bring before council to say, this is why you can't do it. None of them have found anything that I'm aware of. I'm unaware of any feedback that the city has reached or gotten from anyone who says this is a definitive problem and this is why, and here's the research that backs that up. Um and I told my friends that were very against it, that they didn't want me to vote against it either. And they looked at me funny and I said, that's because you don't want me voting based on our friendship. You want me voting on what's right. And it's right if you've got reasons, but without the reasons, this kind of technology is gonna go forward.
Yeah, I would agree with you. That mean it's unfortunately always gonna be somebody's backyard. To grow to grow with the community, I mean, the more that we use cell phones, the more that the need for the towers are gonna be there.
Uh if you didn't figure it out, I'm for this project.
Yeah, I, one thing I don't know has necessarily been brought up. Um you know, there's uh a local school, Barry, where a couple of the teachers that I spoke with uh mentioned that they don't have cellphone service at that school. And I know that this site does provide, you know, that line of sight coverage. Um and that was kind of like a dead space identified in some of the um material that was presented. You know, I, from my own personal experiences, driving through Lake Mills in Waterloo, I had no cellphone coverage. The current town that I work in now in Stoughton, I do not have several cellphone coverage. Um and I know uh several people who decided not to purchase a house or, you know, visit certain areas because they they literally don't have any cellphone coverage. And you know, if I, you know, as as I was, you know, parent waiting for my kids to get to pick them up after school, zero bars. And I think it's also important that we meet the needs of all the citizens within Fort Atkinson, that being able to have that ability to communicate and have cellphone coverage, um, especially in some of the dead, dead zone areas that, that were identified to this project, um, it, there is some benefit to, to people, you know. But again, well spoken Megan with the, the concerns of residents that, that did reach out to us as, uh, council members that expressed their concerns. Um, but I do also believe that there's a benefit to the community with this project as well. I move to approve the proposed ground lease between the city of Fort Atkinson and US Cellular for a portion of the property located at seven 11 Zafki Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, out of interest, why don't we have this be a roll call vote?
Councilman Becker?
No.
Councilman Hartwick? For the first time, I feel like I'm voting either for or against something. Um, but hi.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ten C is the review impossible action on awarding a demolition and remediation bid for the Loeb Lorman site located at one 15 Lorman Street.
Thank you. Um, so obviously progress on the Lorman project. Uh, the, uh, the bids came back. Uh, we, uh, this is a little bit unusual in the way we bid it. We had a base bid, uh, that you saw, which includes things we know will be happening. And that is the removal of all vertical structures, uh, on the property. That includes the buildings, dead trees, uh, fences, things of that nature. Uh, then there's all of the alternative items that you noted in that bid package that are, uh, intended to cover, uh, what happens next. And that is involving remediation. Uh, it's also involving our funding, uh, how much we can afford based on today's, uh, somewhat dynamic bidding environment. Um, we don't know exactly what's going to be required of us for remediation yet. Uh, so we have the tools in place to be able to hopefully uh, answer whatever the requirements are from the DNR on the remediation side of things within that bid packet. So, uh, as I noted in the, um, the memo, uh, to counsel that remediation portion of things will come back to counsel. Once we have a better understanding of exactly what's going to be required, uh, of us on those properties. So, uh, what we're asking for this evening is for council to approve the demolition base bid, which was, uh, $458,000 to remove again, all those vertical structures. Uh, the first, uh, I believe it was six or seven, um, alternative bid items dealt with removal of various horizontal elements. So there are a number of bunkers of concrete. Uh, there's a large 30 by 30 foot steel plated area that was used as a staging area. I'd like to get those out of there as well. Um, there are certainly things that we will not be reusing. So let's use these grant funds that we have available to do that. So I'd like, uh, for council to give, uh, staff the option to exercise, uh, those additional alternative items at the $78,290 uh, total. Uh, I will not exercise them immediately. I would like to, uh, get a few more conversations with DNR in before we do that. But that is money that is budgeted for, uh, demolition. Our remediation funds are set at that $550,000 number. So, so I'm, uh, I'm, uh, again, asking for, uh, a hard, um, yes, on the 458 and also permission, I guess, to exercise uh, those alternative options, uh, probably within the next few weeks would be my estimate, uh, of when we'd feel comfortable going ahead and, and pulling the trigger on those with the, uh, the contractor. Uh, does council have any questions for me?
I'm very glad this is going forward. I know this has been a lot of work and, and your part and staff's part. You're pretty confident we can get this all done in the next three months, less than three months?
I, I'm, uh, I am very confident that for, uh, all of us, we will have demolished the Lorman buildings and we will see an improvement to those three parcels. Uh, the remediation side of things has been a, a bit of a complexity, to say the least. Whether we're able to complete all of the remediation that's required on the site by December 31st, I would give us a 75% chance of doing that. Uh, and we're, we're going to have, uh, an onsite meeting next Monday with DNR to hopefully provide some additional resolution to that. Uh, there are three parcels there. There's the Hake Street parcel, uh, which is, uh, we don't have to do hardly any work on that. Uh, there is the Lorman, uh, parcel, which is the largest, uh, eight acres or so. That's the parcel that really has some moving parts to it that we're still working through. And then there's the Oak Street parcel, which is sort of a triangular parcel there on Oak Street. We know that there is some lead contamination there. We know we can remediate that. And I think we can put a proposal in front of DNR that they will accept. So I'm not as concerned about that. So, uh, a hundred percent sure we'll get Hake and Oak Street taken care of. The Lorman parcel had some contaminants on it that we were not expecting, um, PCBs. And I'm not an expert, but that, uh, tends to get everybody's dander up at the federal level. And that's what we're really working through is how do we, how do we best manage those to reduce the risk long-term for any kind of exposure, uh, not only to the public, but to groundwater and things like that. So.
Obviously long-term getting rid of those chemicals and those carcinogens is a benefit for the entire community, not just.
Certainly is. Yeah. And I'm, and I'm learning a little bit that sometimes the best thing to do is just leave it right where it's at and let everybody know it's there, but not necessarily dig it up. Um, you ascertain what the potential is for that to move, uh, either through dust in the air or through ingestion by somebody putting a garden there or um, through, uh, rain, uh, you know, solving it and taking it down into groundwater. You look at all those aspects. And if they're all very minimal or zero, then sometimes leaving it where it is, is okay. Um, so it's a little counterintuitive to me, but I'm learning, uh, a bit about how that may be a best option. So it's important to think about that too.
Understood.
Andy, can you just confirm kind of, I think to, to Mason's initial question? Is there any potential financial implication to the city if this work is not completed by that December 31st? Since that is the grant deadline, like could we potentially, you know, be putting ourselves in the position that we commit to these contracts to have that work done? But then if it's not finished, could we be risking not receiving the grant funds to support that work?
Yeah, the, um, there is a risk of that. I think the risk is fairly minimal. Um, but the, the grant that we put forward was for blight elimination and it included us eliminating blight by removing the buildings, um, and cleaning up the site that was the Lorman properties, right? The three parcels that we have. Um, we also included remediation, but the thing about the remediation is we had no idea what was on the site at the time. So I think, uh, my response in saying, yes, there's a chance for that. If the DOA were to interpret remediation as being, um, very strictly and saying, you know, you have removed or somehow stabilized everything on the site and the site is closed, then we could be at risk for, uh, a portion, I would say of the grant funds perhaps not being paid to us. Um, I don't think that they would interpret it that way, um, but I have not had that conversation with them yet. I need to do that. And I'd like to do that after I talk further with DNR about that remediation. So, um, I can't say definitively that there is no risk. I can say that I think we're in a very good position to manage that risk. I don't see a scenario where we do all this demolition and we turn in the receipts for it and they say, nope, sorry. Uh, we're not going to pay for that because the entire project, meaning the remediation portion may have fallen short of what their expectations were. So.
But you anticipate some clarity on that as you?
I do. It's, it is, it is a, uh, it's a bit of a moving target, but I feel like I know what the conversation is to have. I just don't feel like I know how to have it just yet.
Um, I'll move to award the Lorman, uh, demolition project base contract with Edgerton Contractors for $458,000 and authorize a city engineer to activate additional demolition related alternates MA dash A through MA dash F, provide that the total remains at or under $612,753.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ten D is the review impossible action relating to an intergovernmental agreement continuing the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium.
Thank you. So the city of Fort Atkinson has been a member of the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium or JCEDC since the organization's inception in 2017. Within the last several months, the organization has undergone a change in leadership and new strategic planning to shape its future. From light of those items, along with the new focus on prosperous communities and connecting with Thrive ED, which, uh, are the private investors uh, and their board of directors, the JCEDC and Jefferson County are proposing changes to the intergovernmental agreement. Uh, and also please note that I currently serve as the chairperson for the JCEDC Board of Directors. So in the memo, it does outline all of the changes to, uh, the existing IGA. You also have in your packet, uh, a redlined version that has each word that's changed from the initial IGA and then the clean copy. Excuse me, uh, which incorporates those changes outlined in, in the memo. I can answer any questions, um, you might have for that. I will mention a couple more things, just that we were, uh, I was involved intimately in redrafting this, uh, intergovernmental agreement. And I do support, uh, that agreement and continuing the city's commitment to the JCEDC. Uh, the board of directors for JCEDC did re-, uh, review, uh, the amended, uh, intergovernmental agreement and voted to adopt it at, at the meeting on September 22nd. Council President Shear was at that meeting as well. Uh, and I will also note that, um, currently Deb Reinbold, uh, serves as the interim executive director of this organization. Under her leadership, that organization has improved relationships with business owners, elected officials, appointed officials, et cetera, throughout Jefferson County. And most recently, Ms. Reinbold and JCEDC have assisted the city of Fort Atkinson in administering the city's capital catalyst revolving loan fund, uh, and played a large part in bringing two new businesses to the city of Fort Atkinson. Uh, so, uh, I, the payment per capita included in the IGA is the same as the current IGA. I, I believe it's $1.50 per capita, which is roughly $18,850 for the city's engagement. Uh, that has been included in the 2023, uh, budget, um, draft budget that you will see next week. Uh, and so, uh, staff does recommend that the city council approve this intergovernmental agreement, continuing the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium and authorize the city manager to execute the document on behalf of the city.
I will say that, uh, it is probably no secret that, uh, we have had our frustrations with the JCEDC in the past few years under previous administration, but, um, the more that I have been able to become involved and see what is going on through their new leadership and through, um, strategic planning, I feel that, uh, the JCEDC definitely provides the value that we are paying for and not having our own economic development entity within the city. I think that they have truly stepped up and, and helped, um, bring some businesses and solidify some businesses within our community. So, that is just my two cents on the overall take of the JCEDC situation.
Kind of knowing that, um, is there any plan in place related to the fact that Deb's position is currently interim? I mean, is that something that the plan or thought is that she will move into that role permanently or is? I'm just kind of curious. I mean, knowing how much of the positive change that has happened has been because of leadership. Are we, is there a concern that if she is no longer in that role, that these things would not or could not continue?
So in the new, uh, intergovernmental agreement, there is a process for appointing a new interim director and it includes the, um, the executive committee, and that includes the chairperson and vice chairperson of the JCEDC, the chairperson and vice chairperson of Thrive ED and the Jefferson County Administrator. So we, uh, that, that group of people did, uh, have met and talked about a process for replacing uh, or for, for hiring, I should say recruitment and selection of that position. And that will be, uh, the annual meeting for Thrive ED and JCEDC where we had a, a meeting together is, um, next week, actually on the 12th, uh, and that will be on that agenda. Okay.
Uh, I, I think this is all very positive and, and I mean, that's, that's a word I would say of, of what we're feeling now from J, JCEDC. We're, we're seeing a lot more positivity and optimism. And I also just want to know, one thing I really like about these revisions is, is it's noted right at the top that there's a shift from just being focused on economic development to community, not economic development and having researched these topics a little bit, I think that's kind of a general philosophical shift that's happening in local governments where, you know, the last used to be you attracted businesses and then the people move there and then you kind of create a space around the people somehow. Later on, now you're creating community, you're drawing the people, and then that's what's going to draw the businesses long-term. And I, I really love that, that the county and surrounding areas a whole seems to be embracing that because I think that's long-term, I think that's going to be a winning strategy for our whole community.
Thank you for that. It's, I agree.
I've been real impressed that it's shifted from where it was. My first experience as a councilman. Uh, I think it was a council for maybe a month and JD, she was in front of us. And their representative basically explained to the city of Fort, they had done nothing, had no reason to do anything for us and didn't intend to do anything the next year, to which I thought, why are we giving your company money? That has evolved to a much finer situation where they are interested in helping us. They are actively doing things that help us. And I'm very pleased to, to, to now have a completely different attitude about their organization.
I agree. Well, I was just saying with all this enthusiasm, would anybody care to make?
Uh, I have moved to approve the intergovernmental agreement, continuing the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium and authorize the city manager to execute the document on behalf of the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Takes us to agenda item 11 miscellaneous. This evening we have none. Agenda item 12 claims appropriations and contract payments. 12A is the review impossible action relating to the verified claims presented by the director of finance and authorization of payment.
Uh, move to approval of the verified claims presented by the director of finance and authorized payment.
Second.
A motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. That motion carries and it takes us to agenda item 13, which is adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Like a motion a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.